You didn't have to put people on.
Hamer City Council Public Hearing Agenda, July 25th, 2023, 5:30 PM. Roll call, please. Present.
Councilman Diveterio?
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Present.
Councilman Leon?
Present.
Councilman Wells?
Public hearing items, none. Give me one second here. Hamer City Council Regular Session Agenda, July 25th, 2023, 5:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews?
Present.
Councilman Diveterio?
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez? Councilman Leon?
Present.
Councilman Wells?
Let us stand for our prayer, please. Most gracious, lovely, heavenly Father, we thank you on this day, giving you the glory and honor that is due your name, Father God, just thanking you for who you are. Fosters most to heavenly Father, we thank you for your darling son, who you allowed to die upon the cross for our sin, for that we are eternally grateful. Father God, we ask you to continue to guide us, continue to keep us as on one accord right now, Father God. We thank you that you are not the author of confusion. We thank you that everything this evening will be done decent, order, pleasingly in your sight. Therefore, you will get all glory, all the honor. And Father God, we come right now emptying out our cells, so you could fill us up right now, Father God. Touch each council member in their district and their families. Continue to touch our city administration, the mayor, his staff, right now, Father God. Continue to protect our firemen, our police, right now, to heavenly Father. Father God, if there's every time we need you, we need you right now. Ask you to continue to protect each citizen in our city right now. Father God, continue to rain down upon us, continue to shine upon us, continue to guide and order our steps right now. We thank you for it all right now, in your darling son, Jesus' name we pray. Amen. For our pledge of allegiance, I ask, excuse me, that all veterans and active military, please render a proper salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item on our agenda, approval of our minutes from our July 11th, 2023 meeting. Can I get a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
No, because I left out and they tried to redo a vote after I left out, and it should all it should have been done while I was here.
Final adoption of ordinance, old business number one.
Final adoption of an ordinance to increase the monthly garbage fee from 1408 to 298. Lacey Landry.
We've had lots of discussion about this item, and we also received the rates for the single service. So I think tonight, the decision that is before the council is whether to go to maintain the twice-a-week service and the recycling at the 190 facility. Option two is to do the twice-a-week service without the recycling at 190. Option three is the once-a-week service, maintaining the recycling at the 190 facility. And option four is once-a-week service with no recycling at all. Option one, to have the twice-a-week and to keep the recycling, so to keep things just as they are, is an overall increase of $6.90. Option two, which is twice-a-week with no recycling, is an increase of $6.40. Option three, which is once-a-week collection with recycling, is an increase of $3.31. And then option four, with once-a-week service and no recycling, is an increase of $2.81. The city did put out, after the last meeting, there was a request to help publicize this effort and get more input from citizens. So we just did a very basic Survey Monkey poll. We sent that to the council to also share with your constituents and sent it out to a lot of the HOA groups and everywhere else that we could. I know Action News published it. I think the Daily Star may have referenced it, so we tried to get it out as much as possible. In that, we had 310 people respond on the question about the service of garbage. Of those, we had 206 who wanted to keep the trash at two times a week. We had 104 who wanted to go to once-a-week service. The second question focused more on the recycling services. We had 300 people answer this question. 186 were in favor of keeping the recycling, and 114 wanted to end the recycling. We did include the cost escalations in this, as you can see, and I can pass this around too, just to remind you of what it looked like. I think we've talked about how garbage, as a whole, in our state over the last year or two, year and a half, has escalated tremendously. Every community has looked at increased rates. There has not been communities that have had decreased rates, similar to what we face at the grocery store, what we face at the convenience stores, what we face everywhere where we go shopping or have services. So it was never a question of whether we were going to have an increase, it was really just a question of when and how much. So that's where we are tonight.
Anyone from the public have a question or comment on this item? Please step to the microphone, provide us with your name and address, please. You have three minutes.
Sal Nicolosi, 3607 Highway 190 West, Hammond, Louisiana. I'm not in favor of this proposal mainly because it's a 30% increase for the people of the city. And a lot of people on limited incomes, the elderly people. So I'm doing in favor of, you know, of this being either tabled or voted down or let it go to the city of Hammond to carry it through the parish, through the whole, through the year, what I'm saying. Other words, from here now until the next year, I would like to see them, the city of Hammond, pay for it, not the citizens. Thank y'all.
Cuviado to Ruquean, also involved for more years than I want to count with Keep Hammond Beautiful. I won't go there tonight, I could talk to you forever with that. Those of you who know me know how well I can speak. With all due respects to Mr. Nicolosi, I am asking that you go to the keep-up to twice-a-week garbage pickup, I think. Okay, $6 sounds like a whole lot. I'm old. I remember hamburger cost 35 cents. Now, what does it cost? I don't eat many of them, but what, three or four dollars? And I look at those poor men picking up that garbage in this heat, and I think, I hope they're paying these poor men right. I think anybody in town can set aside a few cups of coffee and a few cold drinks and a few Polar Pops, that they throw the cups on the side of the road and pay more for garbage pickup. And I'm speaking for a lot of people I know in Villa West where I live, they want twice-a-week pickup. Quoting my good friend Steve Leon, a crawfish ball stinks after about 24 hours. I think people can afford that, and I think that the city should not have to bear that burden because there's so many other things we need. Let's start with filling potholes, particularly in Villa West. Sam, thank you.
Good evening. Tracy Wells, 610 Moni Avenue. Ms. Lacey started out with saying that approximately 300 people were surveyed. The best way to get a full needs assessment would have been to send a survey out in the water bills. That way, all of the customers could have been asked their opinion. The gentleman said that $6.90 is not a lot. When you go to Walmart and you see an old person paying $7 for a prescription because they're on a limited income, that is a lot. You guys did not choose to get this decision put in your lap. We know that. The previous contract was ended early. So at the last council meeting, Councilwoman Gonzalez said, should the city carry a $500,000 bill to pay for the garbage? Well, this council just approved for a $330,000 street sweeper. So which is more important, the garbage or the street sweeper? I don't need a street sweeper in my community. We have a 37% poverty rate. A $330,000 street sweeper, when you have to make a decision whether or not the city should carry the garbage bill? This is a big decision for you all, but this would be considered a garbage tax, as Mr. Nicolosi said, 30%. So when your constituents get that, that's the phone calls you'll have to face. So I ask you, what's more important, a street sweeper or the garbage?
Anyone else? Anyone from the council?
I'll reiterate my previous statements of, I did a Facebook poll before the city did the Survey Monkey. Reached out to a lot of my constituents. It's overwhelming. Over 70% want twice-a-week and even more so want the recycling to continue. My concern has always been that I feel like the city should not subsidize garbage. It hasn't done that before, in my understanding. If we were to continue to pick up the tab and not pass that cost on to the customers and keep it two times a week, we need to amend this budget that we just passed to the tune of about $500,000. So say we got rid of a street sweeper. We're also looking for other funds, which I presume would come from the capital projects, which we worked hard to make sure that the projects that we have in our district are funded because we are doing priorities and none of us are getting everything we're asking for. So again, we are subsidizing garbage, and then let's not forget that this is annually. So we have a contract for a few years. We're going to be, are we going to subsidize garbage to half a million dollars every year and not do projects that we want or get equipment that we want or need? And, you know, I think that's bad business, quite honestly. It's not something we've done before, and we might maybe setting a precedent that is a bad road to go down.
The market constituents want the two times, two times, garbage picked up twice a week, and they want the recycling. And those that I've heard from feel very strongly about that. Again, the concern is certainly the smell and just the overall upkeep of the, overall upkeep of the city. And, you know, it's a, I know, I know the dollars are the dollars, but think about everything else that you're, you know, since COVID, think about everything else that has gone up. There's nothing that has went, there's nothing that has went down. I mean, your utility bills have gone up, your cost of living has gone up. You know, the wages of, the wages of workers, if we can even find them, have gone up. And you got to take those things into consideration.
Wanted to add a thought about this as well, is, you know, we're in a contract of, I don't know, maybe two more years or three more years with this company. If we go down to once a week, when it's time to rebid this, what's that number going to look like? It's going to be higher. We all know it's going to be higher. If once a week is not working out and then we need to move to twice a week, it's going to be higher than what we could get right now. I feel like we're going to get into this spiral of dealing with garbage being a problem, trying to address it, and then paying top dollar every time. And we're in a contract right now with a price that we see is less than other people. If we go down to once a week, when it's time to bid this again, or if it's not working out, we're going to have problems.
I think that the deal here is, is that, well, my district, pretty much, they want twice a week. Majority of them want twice-a-week pickup. So that's not the dilemma here, but, you know, the fact here is that we're in this position right now from, I'm not going to beat a dead horse anymore, but it's from a decision that was made without the public's input, without, you know, I wish they would, they did a great job sending out the survey for the once-a-week, twice-a-week, and recycling, but that survey should have been sent out before the contract was terminated last year, that we had 18 months on, and got the public involved and see what they wanted to do since it's their money and not all mine or anybody else's. So that's the big problem here. It's not about the once or twice. Things are going up, but you don't negotiate and try to get the best for your people when you terminate and get out of a contract that's really good and you have 18 months, and then you have no options, and you have to look and scrounge for someone, you're going to pay more. It's just not good business, it's not good negotiating, it's not good anything. So that's why we're here today. And so it's not about taking projects away, it's about, it's a 30-some percent, not a 10%, it's 30-some percent increase all at one time when we had time to look for other services if we needed to and take our time or keep for the next 18 months. That's about another million dollars we could have saved by staying in that same contract. So let's, let's, let's realize that and let's look at that. And so that, that's what, that's what the issue is. It's not the issue about, you know, twice a week, once a week. People don't, certain people, a lot of fixed incomes and everybody else, they don't want to pay any more money for it when they got everything going up in their household as it is. So that's, that's the big, the big deal we're on right now. And as far as Dick, Ms. Vic, as far as the potholes, well, we pay a guy, the city pays the guy $100,000 a year to lead a street department. So if you got any issue, you can get his cell phone number or not, they shouldn't have any potholes. So, you know, we pay a guy top dollar to lead this city's street department, Robert Williams, I think, about $100,000. So more than welcome. Get his cell phone number, he can give it to you, and then y'all can go around and flag him, and he'll go out. We got plenty of asphalt, so we'll get that taken care of, so.
You know, it keeps getting brought up about the, and I don't want to get into a debate about it, about the contract being, being dissolved, the old contract being dissolved. But let us not forget, at the time that that happened, everybody was whining and griping and hollering about the poor service. The poor service, the poor service. We wasn't, weeks would go by in some areas where we wasn't getting garbage pickup. So let's not forget about that. It wasn't like that, oh, wow, this is just the greatest, greatest service, greatest customer service, and everything is lovely. It wasn't that way. Everybody was, was, was getting really poor service. And I see Sal shaking his head, but anyway. I can tell you, in my district, the service was absolutely horrible. They were having a hard time finding, finding drivers, finding, you know, collectors. It just, and, and I feel like that that's probably what led the mayor to do what he, to do what he did, right or wrong.
Once again, let's remember, this company was not doing the job it was supposed to do. They came to us and wanted a CPI increase, Consumer Price Index, meaning the prices were going up on them. They wanted an increase. We told them we were not going to give them an increase, pay them more to do a job that they admittedly could not do. Said they were having trouble doing it, period. Bob Zabia, Mayor Bob Zabia Punchetula, and I worked for eight months before we brought this to the council, and his council. The price that we had as a contract was lower than the price it is now. Council didn't like that, said let's do a RFP, Request for Proposal, and we did. The very same company, Waste Pro, came in at a higher price, which was still lower than Am Waste and Republic, I believe, or whatever other company came in and bid it. The price was still lower. This is a company that asked for an increase. We were not going to give them an increase on a contract where they weren't doing the job, admittedly.
The big difference key there that's missing is that the agreement was terminated, our agreement was terminated, so we had no option. That's why they went up. Punchetula did not terminate their agreement. We terminated, so we left, we lost all our leverage. I'm not going back and forth, we lost all our leverage because we let them out of a contract, and then you send out the bid, so with 30 days to get a city our size to get bid. So we're not going to get bids in 30 days from people that are actually going to bid on our, seriously, they either overbid or not bid. So that's just not good business, not good management, not good process to terminate agreement before you have something else lined up that you at least talk to somebody about it, but that's 35% higher on the people. So that's the big deal on there. It's none personal. I'm not going after you directly or saying it or trying to, but it was terminated, so we had no option. So then they could have gone up to whatever they wanted to go up. It was a terrible, terrible process and the way of handling that was, and that's why we have 30-some percent increase right now. It's not just because everything's going up. Yes, everything's going up, but we were lucky, the city was lucky to have that contract bid it out in 2020 when prices were not skyrocketing and we had some more time left on that, on that contract to take advantage of it. And that could have been a thousand, that could have been about a million dollars we could have saved as a city to put in all these capital outlay projects. So you can go ahead and talk about, well, you want to do away with this and do away with that, you know, but at the end of the day, that's the problem. You can sugarcoat it, talk around in circles about it, but it was a terrible way to handle that at that time. And now we have to deal with this right now, going back and forth and, and, you know, passing it on to the people as usual, and they got to pay for it. So yet $7 or whatever, but it's still a 30-some percent increase and a million dollars roughly over the year's time, so.
This is a contract you agreed to. You simply need to pay for it.
We had no.
You're deciding to treat it.
I would have canceled it. We had no service. And if Am Waste wanted to carry it on and fulfill the next 30 days, we wouldn't have service at all because the contract was terminated.
Not true.
You terminated it.
Not true.
Yeah, so.
Anyone else?
Make a motion. I'll make a motion to adopt the increase of monthly garbage fee from 1408. Oh, we are, aren't we? Sorry. No, we're not.
Final adoption of an ordinance.
No, we've, we've public hearing this to death already. Yeah. Make a motion to adopt an increase in the monthly garbage from 1408 to 298. For, and keep twice-a-week pickup and the recycling.
I'll second.
Councilman Andrews?
No.
Councilman Diveterio?
No.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
No.
I'd like to make a motion for once-a-week pickup with the recycling.
Second.
What's the increase?
Yeah, they don't have them up there. Normally, they would have them up there. You can see a little bit better.
I don't know if the link is updated. The increase for once-a-week collection with recycling is an increase of $3.31. The total amount would be $17.39 for the rate.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
No.
Councilman Diveterio?
No.
Councilman Leon?
No.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Make the same motion I made last time, which was, I make a motion to increase monthly garbage by $6.40, which is twice-a-week pickup, but also continue recycling with no increase to the bill. So the bill increase would be $6.40.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
No.
Councilman Diveterio?
No.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
No. So is there any way that we can table this again?
You've already taken three votes, so just take no action, or you could table it however you.
Okay.
Frank Noah? Frank can move on. Introducing, introduction of an ordinance.
Introduction of an ordinance to amend the UDC Reception Banquet Halls. Councilman Leon?
Yeah, the, the purpose behind this is to revisit the language that was used in the ordinance for banquets and reception halls. Seems over time that some businesses that, that were permitted to be banquet or reception halls really turned out to just be bars and nightclubs. And that has caused some, that has caused some grief for, for the city. And so it's just a time, you know, time goes on and things change, and every once in a while, I think you have to go back and, and revisit the language and tighten it up a little bit, and that's the, that's the whole purpose of, of, that's the whole purpose of doing this.
Anyone in, in the audience have a question or comment about this particular item? Step to the microphone. Please give us your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Hold up, hold up. Will anybody get up? Steve, help me out on this here. I'm a little lost. What, now what, what are you looking for? For the banquet hall and the reception hall?
Tightening up the language and differentiating a banquet hall and a reception hall from a bar or a nightclub.
What's the?
And this will not affect, and this would not affect, this would not affect hotels, motels, restaurants, bed and breakfasts, bars, and those kinds of things. It's, it's set up so that a person can't say, I want to rent a building or lease a building as an event center and turn it into a bar where liquor is served without permits, where parties go on without permits, and, and so on down the line. So all it does is it tightens that up and it adds, it adds some restrictions in order to make that happen so that you have a legitimate reception hall or a legitimate banquet hall.
Andre, did you address this?
Yes, sir. So we, we received.
Yes, sir, so we, we received comments, um, from the first draft that went out, and the concern became, what about businesses who are licensed as hotel motel restaurant, bar, bed and breakfast, but sometimes use their facility for receptions? And what Councilman Leon and I had originally discussed was only applying the change to standalone businesses. They're only licensed and only permitted as reception halls or banquet halls. There are actually only three in town that are standalone businesses for reception halls and banquet halls. And what's happened over time is those groups had functions that were promoted on social media. They had covered charges and bans, and it became like a nightclub. And that was very difficult, it caused lots of problems, uh, in, in neighborhoods. So when it came time for enforcement, it was really very difficult to chase those down. So what, we've got some good comments in the last day or so. So in the process, this just gets introduced, it goes to planning and zoning, and then planning and zoning has its own public hearing and vets comments and looks at it. But the way this is evolving is basically the changes will only apply to standalone businesses that have a, a single permit for reception or banquet hall. So if there's a, you know, the mezzanine or Topolac Catering or La Michelin or a hotel, they can continue to operate as is because they have a different permit. They've got a license for a restaurant or a hotel or a motel. So we're only looking to change for these standalone businesses that have started to operate as basically nightclubs. So I did prepare a revised ordinance, I didn't want to complicate things here. This could be introduced as is, sent to planning and zoning, and then at that point, we discussed maybe compartmentalizing the standalone businesses, uh, operating as a nightclub, operating as a banquet hall, reception hall, from those who have other permits. So that's where we are. So, so this is just introduction, it goes to planning and zoning for their review and comment, and it comes back here for any revisions that might come up, a public hearing, and then final adoption.
Okay, so Andre, the three that had a license for this here, what are those, what's the name of those buildings? And why are you looking for, let me say this here. Those buildings, when they, when they got the license, they got the license for it, but a lot of times when we applying for license and stuff, we truly don't know what we applying for license for. And so it seem like when you go to get your license, they should explain to you what all you can do with that building. So we talk about standalone buildings, and I have to speak up on it because, uh, we have standalone buildings in our community. We got the Mason Hall, which is a standalone building, we got the Black Heritage Center. So these rules that I see, I think it might be better if it apply just to Steve Leon District, started up throughout the whole city of Hammond. It might be good just for his district only, because the, the issue is, and everybody should be aware of it, the issue is they had a shooting there, somebody ended up getting killed, and that's where all this here come about it. And they really couldn't do nothing because it happened in a parking lot, it didn't happen inside the building. So I don't think that's good for District Three. Because all the buildings and the hotels that we have in District Three, and I heard him say that it won't affect the hotels, but anywhere, and, and this is what they did when, uh, Mason Foster was in office, for any halls, they had to have alcohol license and everything, this from the police union, this to every last one of them. So when we single out, you can look for one rat, but you got a lot of mice going to come behind it, so you better take care of that one rat and stop trying to take care of all of it. And then when you write this stuff up, realize how you writing this stuff up, who it really going to affect? I have a lot of personal stuff with me, but guess what, I keep it with me. It ain't going to affect you, it affect me. I don't bring my personal stuff with the city council. So what I'm saying is, if we got an issue with this building, and then the person who rented the building out, look at them, tell them, why would you rent this building out? One thing about me, when I'm doing leases or whatever, we're going to write down everything in the lease. So you need to look at the person who wrote the lease out and what did they say? So that's not going to benefit District Three at all. So we don't want that in District Three, and I'm speaking for the entire District Three.
So Councilman, the three locations that are currently licensed just as a reception or banquet hall? The Elite Event Center, twenty-seven seventy West Church Street? The Boulevard Event Center, twelve forty-two South Morrison Boulevard? And the Living Room LLC, eighteen oh one Nashville Avenue? Those are the only three businesses that operate a standalone reception hall.
Okay, and what year do they all to apply for their license?
Those are current licenses, so they have a, they have a current license now, so for this year.
So nobody else have a current?
No, not, not as a standalone. So those other locations are licensed as a restaurant or a bed and breakfast or a hotel motel, they have a separate business license. The way that we're looking to eventually change it is to not apply that. So if a restaurant hosts a baby shower or a, a wedding, uh, reception at their location, they're not going to be affected by the change.
Okay, now they just did a brand new reception hall, uh, downtown Hammond, a brand right across from the police station. So that's what I'm looking at. So we can sit here, like I said, when you're going after one person, be careful, because, and real stuff, if this pass and I see a function at anybody building, I'm going to call the police. Realize the rules, and that's what you need to let the folks know, tell them the rules that you have in place. How many people supposed to come to the hall, that this is supposed to go to the police station? So state all that to the people for they'll know the rules, just in case they don't have the rules. Are the rules on up here? Huh? Y'all can't see that? See, y'all been coming here all this time, y'all never could see that. A little bit. See what's going on? That's why y'all be so fooled, because you don't see the rules. That's why, that's why the garbage, everything you're dealing with, you don't see it all. That's why we going through this. So I'm sorry to take so much time, so I apologize, President Kip, but the people need to know the rules. You're coming up here talking, know what you're talking about before you come up here and talk. Because in the process you talking, everything is being recorded, and these records will never go away, never. So watch what you say when you on this here mic talking. So remember that, and when you come up here and talk, ask what the rules are, what it's truly about, and then you'll know.
Anyone from the public? Again, come to the microphone, please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, Derek Bayham, one zero two Pine Drive, uh, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four, uh, one. Uh, can somebody from the council tell me the rules, uh, that applies for event centers?
Councilman Leon, you know, since you've given a proposal.
The current rules?
He's asking for the current rules.
Well, before you state, I've, I've been established since, uh, twenty twenty, uh, Boulevard Event Center.
So the definition is in the UDC?
Mm-hmm.
And the current definition of reception banquet hall is an establishment which is rented by individuals or groups to accommodate private functions, including but not limited to banquets, weddings, anniversaries, and other similar celebrations. Such a use may or may not include kitchen facilities for the preparation or catering of food, the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premises consumption only during scheduled events, and not open to the general public, and, three, outdoor gardens or reception facilities. That's the current definition.
Okay, sounds good. Um, my councilman Sam, I always stay in contact with him, uh, just to, to make sure that I'm doing great business. Uh, I have three, about to be four businesses in Hammond, I'm from Hammond, graduated from Hammond, graduated from Southeastern, uh, did all kind of give backs to the community, about to do some more stuff this week, et cetera. That may mean something to you guys or not. But when it comes to changing some of these supposedly rules and what we've, I followed since twenty twenty, and some things are altered, I don't feel like the good should suffer for the bad. So I'm here, excuse my attire because I coming from work, but I heard about this ordinance, and it was very important that I tend to make sure that the good don't suffer for the bad, and that I'm here to let you guys know that I've always done good business, never heard anything other than good business. So my presence, being here, should let you guys know I want to continue to do good business.
Where's your place located?
South Morrison, twelve forty-two South Morrison.
Next to, next to what?
Shooters is in front of my business.
You are a problem. Your business has been a problem.
I'm the problem?
You, your business has been a problem, we get calls on your business often.
You got police reports on my business?
I'm sure they do.
I promise you they don't.
No, I've, I've watched shooters, I've watched shooters for a while. Problems in the parking lot, problems with drinking, and I know he's not shooters. I know where he is, you're in the corner, in the back corner. So what have you done to change the problems that you've had in the parking lots to your business? People coming, yes?
Problems I've had in my, in my parking lot?
Yes, sir.
It's a public parking lot, I can't control the parking lot.
Okay, but they're coming in and out of your place, right?
Sometimes, but like, like, like I've stated.
I'm just.
Let me, let me, oh, my, you got to pause. A hundred and seventy-nine? Unlimited? Like, like I've stated, and if, if we want to go to parking lot with the young fellow, the hair that I used to cut, Mr. Ty, I was thrown in saying that it was a police detail the night of that shooting, and my business wasn't even open. I had to go on Facebook to clear that up, because the chief said that HMPD was doing a detail at shooters and the Boulevard, and I wasn't even open at all. So that is defamation to me and my business, something that I work hard for, things that I created here in the city of Hammond. Pay taxes on, license current, everything. Like I said, I'm today, I'm in the process of creating another business in Hammond, but I'm the problem.
In that location, there have been problems.
Twelve forty-two is not the problem. I, I mean, we can look at the police reports, twelve forty-two is not, we can go back, I honestly, nothing against another business. I had screen records on my phone from situation happened up towards the road, not at twelve forty-two Unit P.
We re-trust shooters as well? Yes, sir. You need to get up to the podium, please, state your name and address.
Ephraim Brown, listen. I ain't, listen.
You need to give your address.
All right, Mooney Avenue. How can you determine, being that the parking lot is used by everybody, how can you determine at the time that something is happening, that it's not one place and it's the other place? How can you do, if you don't frequent the place?
I'm getting the calls, I'm getting the calls from other owners.
Okay, so if you get the call.
Determining or supposedly, because we send the police out.
How do we determine if it's fact?
Well, I don't think, I'm going to say this here, I don't think you really have a problem, uh, Mr. Bayham, because you not a standalone business. You got business, you joint, your building is joint to other buildings, so shooters is more of a standalone, uh, building. And then I think, Mr. Andre, uh, you said three businesses, and his was called out. So was he notified about these new rules that's coming about?
Not specifically, so what's the address of your business?
Twelve forty-two South Morrison.
Unit P, the Boulevard Event Center? Yes, so this, this change would apply to you.
I have a catering license too, I mean, that's, that's what my license says. So my rest, my restaurant offers catering services to anybody that rents the building. The Boulevard Lounge and Grill, four six two eight nine North Morrison Boulevard, Suite Eight.
That might be outside of city limits.
It's out of the city, but I'm just letting them know that my restaurant offer catering service to anybody that rents the building.
But I thought it was for standalone building, so.
So we'd have to look at his license and his permit, and if you have a, a, another license at that same address, you may be able to continue to operate. I can't answer that tonight because I don't, I don't have your licenses and your permits in front of me. But if you only, what, what, the city records show you have a single purpose permit as a reception banquet hall for twelve forty-two South Morrison Boulevard, Unit P, and no other license or permits under the Boulevard Event Center.
But you may know of the license for us.
That's, that's, that was reported.
On premises, alcohol.
Is it Unit P?
Yes, sir.
Well, then, that's, that may be just your alcohol, ability to sell alcohol.
Including the occupational license with the city.
I just have to look at it, I can't, I just can't say that without looking at that one.
Um, oh, you go ahead.
No, don't you do all that talking right now. And I'm saying that because everything you say going to come back and haunt you, real stuff, because you know what? It's personal when people come at you. So your building is not standalone, so really, this shouldn't even apply to you. I heard him say, biggest day standalone buildings.
It's standalone permits, a permit, a standalone.
So it's not a building?
Well, it could be a building, so it is a, it is a, it is a single purpose permit. That could be in part of a building or could be in an entire building. So it's standalone businesses that have a single permit or license as a reception or banquet hall.
Yeah, and see, that's what I said, which he was in my district, he's not in my district anymore. But we need to make sure that if we having an issue with one building, everybody shouldn't be punished. And if we're going to talk about alcohol, let's start talking about alcohol downtown. And now, guess what, this room, y'all wouldn't even be in here, this room would be filled with other people. So if we're going to talk about alcohol, let's talk about alcohol as a whole. Don't just single out, and that's why I say, we're going to single out one building, and it going to be an issue. So what we need to do is see the issue in that one building, and let's take care of that one building. Started putting everybody in here that it shouldn't even affect, because the Black Heritage Center serve alcohol, the police union serve alcohol, the Knights of Columbus serve alcohol, every last one of these buildings, you can go there, you can get drunk. Not drink, but you can get drunk. So let's think about all this here, and then on top of that, the Holy Ghost Church, they serve alcohol. They not doing it in their building, but they serve alcohol, so all these waivers come before us, be dealing with alcohol. Garlic bottle, marly bottle, whatever y'all want to say. Y'all was giving them a three hundred and sixty-five days permit, never had to come back before to sit again to carry alcohol across the street by the church. What, nothing said, so if this pertaining to alcohol, every person, when they come before us, and I think in February, if I'm not mistaken, to renew their liquor license, all of them approved of at one time. You don't single out nobody. Councilman Andrew singled out two people. It looked like everybody about to have a baby, because he tried to clean his community up, and everybody had something to say. So now, look where we at now. And of course, I'm not against what Steve Leon got on here, I'm against it if it affects the city. So what, what my suggestion is, it should be in his district, it's about the college students, it's about the university. So it need to be clean, but that same cleanliness, I want in District Three, that same cleanliness. So we got to be careful here on what we're doing right now. So this is something that I see is personal, that's all I see. You know, and, and I don't get into personal things, if I forgot an issue with somebody, my community, no, I'm going to tell you. I'm not going to bite my tongue, I'm going to go at you and tell you, look, bro, you need to straighten this up, you need to do this here, you need to do that. And when the police called me and asked me if Ephraim Brown doing something wrong, yeah, do what Ephraim stay at, sixteen Mooney Avenue, go to his house, that's what I do. So be careful in what we're doing right here.
So the parking lot, they have any issues with, has a, who, has a developer, whoever has been notified of issues in the parking lot that they're having?
That particular development, do you own your property?
Yes, sir.
That particular development, different sites, suites, own their own. That particular development, different sites, suites, own their own part of those buildings.
So Andre, who's, so who's in charge, who is, who's responsible then for that parking lot then as far as there's chaos or chaotic? You know, uh, whatever complaints coming in, if it's everybody, so who is legally obligated to do something about that parking lot?
It's whoever's causing the chaos. The, the property owner may not be responsible if he didn't contribute or cause to the chaos. It's whoever's creating the bad behavior. Um, so it's hard to say. What's happened is it's hard to police parking lots where alcohol gets in there. And then it becomes a outdoor party. And it's hard to, it's just hard to police, um, the, the police can go out there and disperse crowds. Um, but it's just very difficult.
I mean, somebody probably owns a parking lot. It's either shared, it's either one, it's either shared or it's, or owned by somebody to where at some point in time, if it's some criminal activities going on, then it needs to be managed. It needs to be reported and notified and addressed. I mean, don't you, I mean, don't you think, or am I missing something?
Well, hopefully the criminals get arrested. That may not be the problem.
That's generally what happens, but then by the time the police get there, it disperses.
And once again, when it comes to the parking lot, and you help me out Andre if I'm wrong, when you're in that parking lot, that considered an open container, right?
Could be, could be, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Again, I'd like to reiterate, this is just a, um, introduction. And an introduction usually is followed where the public has input, the planning and zoning will have input and a lot of the little, a lot of the little bugs can be, and language can be worked out. The bottom line is if you own a business and you're doing the right thing and you're doing what you say you're doing, you have nothing to worry about. All this is, all of this is trying to do is if you're saying that you're X and you try to do A, then there's a problem. That's, that's the bottom line. But like I said, the language can be worked out in the public hearing. I mean, all we trying to do tonight is introduce this so that it can be discussed and it can, you know, be worked out that everybody can do what they want to legally do. That's, that's it. That's, you know, nobody's picking on anybody.
So Andre, a quick question for you. From my understanding what you said at the beginning when we started discussing this, that once this item is introduced, this item, then we'll go to planning and zoning.
Correct.
Then it will come back to, to us.
Because it's a change to the UDC. It's a change to the definitions in the UDC. So if it's introduced, then it goes to planning and zoning. They go through their process, they have public hearing, they have their debate, they have their discussion on as it is or change it or, or no, whatever their recommendation is. Then it comes back to the City Council with their recommendation. There's a public hearing and then you vote on final adoption.
I'll just add to that too. We also make notification to anyone who would be impacted. So anybody who is zoned or has this type of license through the planning and zoning process, you will get a letter. All the adjacent businesses will get a letter, like it'll, it'll be the same way that we've gone about other changes.
Can I ask you a question? What license does the union hall have, Police Union Hall?
I don't know.
You don't know?
I don't know.
Okay.
Well, this was going on, one second Brad. This was going on. This man left work to come here tonight. Three weeks from now, we don't know where he gonna be at. Four weeks from now, when this get voted on, he don't give an input now, you'll never know what he had to say. So he can't wait, no, four weeks? He can't wait for a meeting next week, week after next? If he don't say what he got to say now, you'll never know what he had going on. So, introduction? Yeah, it's introduction. It mean it gotta be talked about. It's starting now, that's where you can tell all your family and friends to come to all them three more meetings that they gonna have. And for all y'all can sit here and fight for it, this was started at the introduction. So, you doing right, but now you know to bring all your family and friends with you next time.
Uh, my last thing, uh, Sam, have I or have I not always called or text to, uh, just to make sure that for us District Four, that everything is, is, is okay with the neighbors and the people in my area?
You, you have, and, uh, like I said, I've told you before, I haven't personally received any calls from, from anything. Not saying there isn't or is, but I haven't personally received any calls. So, uh, you know, that's just, yeah.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just making sure that everybody understand that I.
You've, you've reached out and, yeah, you've reached out and I haven't had any. I get calls daily about everything, but I have not gotten calls, you know, from personally, but you were going.
Unit P?
Yeah.
You haven't got any call from Unit P?
Okay, correct, alright. Yes, sir.
Um, just posing the whole parking lot thing, because the unit on the side of you, I rented for years as a church. And I understand that parking lot. I've seen people come in out of one side and come in on the other, so it's kind of hard sometimes to say who's coming where. So, yeah.
That's all I have.
So is there details required or is there any kind of policing required of that parking lot over a certain amount of, of people coming in and out, uh, Andre, or, I mean, if, because if there's illegal activity, I don't know what the complaints have came, come in, but if there's illegal activity going on, you would think policing would be involved to where it would disperse.
So in the, in the proposed change, any, uh, event exceeding fifty guests would require private security?
So right now, we, so right now, on the books, we have nothing with any event halls or anything that requires, uh, security yet?
Correct, there's none, correct, no requirement.
Okay, well, my event center, anyone over fifty, we, we require, uh, security on, on, especially with alcohol being involved with the event. That's why I say the statement, you know, can't be check police reports of anything happen at my unit. That's all I have.
Good evening. My name is Tanya Turner, two eleven Kansas Street, Hammond, Louisiana. I am a resident of District Three. But I've also worked for many years with many of the facilities you've mentioned as far as renting them out for banquet halls. I'm currently actually about to put on a fundraiser for a scholarship and we're serving alcohol. We've also hired our own security because it was recommended in the contract. The wording that you have here is a problem. The wording, not saying that the concept is not effective, but the way you have this worded, you are shooting every promoter, every entrepreneur, every scholarship recipient in the foot. You're telling me I cannot pay for a building, host and sell tickets to raise funds for the scholarship? That's what that says. That's all I read. That was the first thing I saw. Even if I don't sell alcohol, you just told me I cannot sell tickets to come to a function to raise money. So the wording is a problem. And before you introduce this, I advise you to take it back. Reword it, reintroduce it to yourselves before you bring it to us because there are a lot of people who need this. There are a lot of people who utilize these buildings for weddings, for passovers. We lead, we go for repasses and sometimes these families do not have money to bury, so we raise money for it. We may get out there and sell plates and rent this building or it's donated. Many functions. You're telling me if I get married tomorrow and I want to have me a big wedding and I'm gonna pay for all my alcohol, I can't serve it? I have to go pay a bartender from somewhere I don't even know to serve the alcohol that I just paid for? It's literally the wording. I understand the concept and I'm not saying you're wrong. Mr. Leon, you're actually, I understand where you're coming from. But it's not really and truly, it's not a blanket thing. It's an individual basis. It literally is individual basis. I live in the area right next door to the Heritage Center. I'm not calling y'all complaining. The Heritage Center bumps up against my backyard. They are my neighbor. I can tell you when they have a party and when they don't. I don't have any problems. We don't have that problem. That centralized incident, it could have been grape juice served. It was gonna happen. So you have to change that wording. All of the businesses that put on functions are not the problem. It's an individual problem. So what we need to look at for this to be effective is who's gonna police it? Because inside the building, we're having a good time. Every, I've been to shooters, I've been to the Boulevard, I've been to both. One of them, I'm required to wear heels and dress up. The other one, I can walk in, look in any kind of way. One is a problem and one isn't. It literally is not the functionality of that business. It's the people who are allowed in that business. And I know one building does not allow you to walk in, come in and be in any kind of way. They will properly escort you out and not allow you to come back. And there's another one, they don't care if you tear that building down. Long as you come in and pay some more money and keep drinking, 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 they gonna let you come back. So, the one that we think is the problem, I promise you is not. We have to look at the greater good because in reality, you're gonna affect more than just the business owners. You're gonna affect the community because we need those buildings to not have these type of stipulations. Like where I'm gonna go, to raise funds and I gotta spend more money to raise a scholarship. Just be cognizant of the wording and I advise you just to change it.
Again, I think that's, you know, it's gotta start, it's gotta start somewhere and the discussion has to start somewhere. I think the discussion started tonight. We, we drafted something, uh, with, with the help of, uh, Mr. Kudre and we drafted something that initiated the discussion tonight. I think the discussion needs to continue so that, so that we can come up with something that, again, allows the people who want to do the right thing to continue to do the right thing and deter those who are trying to circumvent the law and circumvent the permit. That's, I mean, that's, that, that's all there is to it. And at the end of the day, we may not get to that point and so then we just won't do it. But I think you gotta try to get to that point because if you don't, you're gonna have more trying to circumvent and that's gonna hurt the good. And we don't want to hurt the good, because you're right, there are a lot of good things that, that, that can happen in, you know, in these, in these event centers and, and banquet halls. But, you got the, you got the way, you got to find a way to deter the bad. And that's all, and that's all I'm trying, that's all I'm trying to do. So again, the discussion needs to just continue, but the discussion won't continue unless we move through the process. So nothing's, nothing tonight is gonna, is, is gonna go into law, go into effect. As you heard, it's gotta go to planning and zoning, this can be talked about some more. A lot of this may even change before it gets to planning and zoning. So, you know, that, again, the purpose of introduction, but thank you for your comments. I appreciate it.
Anyone else from the public? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to introduce.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye. Resolutions, oh, business, oh, business number one.
I ask to table that one since we table garbage discussion.
Table.
Make a motion to table.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
New business number one?
A resolution to appoint Brandon Ricotta to the Hammond Historic District Commission for the remainder of a four-year term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. This will complete the term served by Jennifer White. Mayor Penapinto?
Uh, Brandon's family has been in this district probably since the forties, fifties. Uh, Brandon lives in the city. He has a passion for doing this, for serving the city, has mentioned it often. And, um, serves in the medical field. I think he'll have his resume. And, um, I'm asking for your favorable, favorable approval to, uh, allow him to be on the historic board.
Mr. Ricotta, you like to come up?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Come before you all today, hoping for the opportunity to serve on the Hammond Historic District. If there's anything else you'd like to know, um, as Mayor Pete mentioned, I'm a lifelong resident. Um, I've served on multiple nonprofit boards and leadership roles and, um, just really have a passion for serving my community and since my family had a business here for so long, uh, would like the opportunity to uphold the integrity of our historic district.
Thank you for being willing to serve this board as, as one that, uh, is very important in my mind, uh, and it's one of the reasons why downtown is such a great place to be. So, uh, thank you for volunteering your time.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna say this here, sir. You go to your seat, you can sit down. If you anything like your dad, uh, I know you gonna be in good company. So I know he gonna direct you and tell you what ought to do and what not to do. So, I think you gonna be good on this board.
Pleasure of the council. Make a motion to approve? Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Resolution number two?
A resolution to appoint Tanya Turner to the Hammond Historic District Commission for the remainder of a four-year term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. This will complete the term served by Shawna Seals. Mayor Pete?
As you heard, Tanya's passionate. She wants to serve, she serves now. Uh, she was, like many of us, decided to try to run this serve, like myself. Didn't make it to the end and, uh, I think she's just here, uh, wanting to keep up the good work and, and fulfill her passion for serving. I think she'd do well at this board and this, on this board and I ask for the council's favorable, um, approval.
Ms. Turner?
Good evening, once again, those who know me, I am Tanya Turner, a lifelong resident, fifty years in the city of Hammond. I have lived abroad, served in the military for twelve years, so I've seen a lot. History was my number one love. The history of my city is also a love. And I believe that our representation should be deep. We should dig deep and stay digging deep for the true history of our city. So I would love to be a part of this board so that we continue to make sure that Hammond is thriving and recognizing the history.
Turner, you have big shoes to fill with Ms. Shawna. Uh, she served that board very, very well for a long time. I was sad to see her go. And I appreciate you stepping up and wanting to serve and volunteering your time.
Thank you.
Ms. Turner, I want to tell you, thank you from, uh, getting this opportunity from being on this here board, uh, I must say it, I must say it, I'm not one to bite my tongue. I'm glad to see a minority, another minority getting on this board and I shouldn't have to be ashamed or afraid to say somebody look like me and don't recognize them. Every race can recognize their people, except our race. We have to watch what we say. Diversity, everything that we truly need to make Hammond great, really great, that's what we need. And I want to say thank you for getting the opportunity to be on this board.
Anyone else? Alright. Pleasure of the council. I make a motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Ms. Turner and Mr. Ricotta, thank you guys for stepping up to the plate, just serving this capacity. We thank you. Resolution number three?
A resolution to authorize the Hammond Regional Arts Center to serve, sell and otherwise handle alcohol during the built, beer tasting event Brew's Arts Festival held on Saturday, October seventh, twenty twenty-three from four to, four PM to nine PM. The event boundaries include the one hundred block of North Cypress Street and Morrison Park Alleyway up to, but not including, North Cherry Street. Note, Brew's Arts Festival is hosted by the Hammond Regional Arts Center as a primary fundraiser for the organization. Activities include craft beer tasting, art vendors and live music and food trucks. Melissa Griffin?
Melissa Griffin, I'm the executive director of the Hammond Regional Arts Center. Brew's Arts Festival is our fourteenth annual festival. It goes to support our mission of perpetuating the arts locally, for bringing arts to our, into our community, for assisting and helping develop. for assisting and helping develop artists in the area and for bringing access to everyone, bringing art access to everyone. If you guys have any questions.
It's always a fun event.
Anyone from the public have any questions or concerns? Anyone else from the council? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
All right. Resolution number four.
A resolution to grant a waiver of the city of Hammond's open container law to the Hammond Regional Arts Center during the beer tasting event Brew's Arts Festival held on Saturday, October 7th, 2023, from 4:00 to 9:00, 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM. The event boundaries include the 100 block of North Cypress Street and Morrison Park Alleyway up to but not including North Cherry Street. Note, Brew's Arts Festival is hosted by the Hammond Regional Arts Center as a primary fundraiser for the organization. Activities include craft beer tasting, art vendors, live music and food trucks. Melissa.
No questions?
Same thing, right?
Just the open container waiver.
Anyone from the public have any questions on this item? Anyone from the council? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve. Second. Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Resolution number five.
A resolution to authorize the Hammond Regional Arts Center and its approved merchants to serve, sell or otherwise handle alcohol during a wine and cheese stroll held on Saturday, August 26th, 2023, from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM in coordination with the Hammond Downtown Development District Hot August Stroll Event. The event boundaries are East and West Robert Street, North and South Cherry Street, East and West Coleman Avenue and North and South Magnolia Street. Michelle Kendall and Melissa Griffin.
Good evening, council. So we had to, we initially were on the agenda last time, but we had to get some things clarified per ATC. So we've restructured, the Downtown Development District has restructured this event pretty significantly this year. And so in that, we are collaborating with the Regional Arts Center for our wine and cheese stroll. So the DDD is not handling the purchasing of the alcohol, they are. I did provide some posters in your pack, I'm not quite sure if you got them. But we just wanted to support them in this as this is our event, we're all collaborating together. And yes, any additional questions that you have related to the event, we'd be happy to answer.
I think it's a great idea that y'all are partnering up for this and, and the reimagined Hot August Night. So it should be a good time, nice hot event.
Definitely hot.
And I think, Michelle, you said that the reason that the wording is a little bit different on these is because of ATC and the way that they're interpreting the permits. So that's why you're gonna see a couple of extra resolutions than what we normally see for the event.
Yes.
Anyone from the public? Anyone from the council? Pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Resolution number six.
A resolution to authorize Benny's Place to serve, sell or otherwise handle alcohol during the Hammond Downtown Development District Hot August Stroll event held on Saturday, August 26th, 2023, from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. The event locations are 106 Northwest Railroad Avenue in Railroad Park and the 100 block of West Charles Street near Kate Square Park. Michelle Kendall and Ellie Johnson.
So like, like I mentioned, we restructured a few things with this event. And so the Downtown Development District is not purchasing any alcohol, aren't hosting the wine and cheese stroll. We are not doing outside beer booths as we have done in the past. So Benny's Place is going to be, they have a catering license and they, we are the ones that we're working with to have a, a tent near the main stage area to offer alcohol to, and other beverages to our event goers. L. Johnson is here on behalf of Benny's Place if you have any questions. And like I said, this is per ATC with how we basically pitched this event to them. They said this is how the resolution should be.
Any questions from anyone in the public? Any questions or concerns from anyone on the council? Pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Resolution number seven.
A resolution to grant a waiver of the city of Hammond's open container law for the Hammond Downtown Development District's Hot August Stroll event on Saturday, August 26th, 2023, from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM hosted in the coronation, in coordination with Hammond Regional Arts Center and Benny's Place. The event boundaries are East and West Robert Street, North and South Cherry Street, East and West Coleman Street, North and South Magnolia Street and inside 106 Northwest Railroad Avenue in Railroad Park and the 100 block of West Charles near Kate Square Park. Michelle Kendall.
Thank you for reading all of that. So this is just reflective of, you know, the places that we'll be serving alcohol in partnership with the Hammond Regional Arts Center and Benny's Place.
Any questions from anyone in the public? Questions from anyone on the council? Pleasure of the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Resolution number eight.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an intergovernmental agreement between Tangahoa Parish and cities within the parish regarding Acadia Ambulance Services. Dwayne Mesh.
Council, thank you for hearing from me a little bit today. I wanted to first begin by saying, when I visited with you last time, we had ordinance changes. And I wanted to thank you for allowing those ordinance changes to be updated and bring the city to its present status. Then, when I visited with you, we were starting to have some classes. I encourage the public to participate with anyone who may be interested in becoming an EMT, an EMR or paramedic. I am here to say tonight that we've had a lot of success with those programs. We've tripled, excuse me, we've tripled up on our training and we're reaping some of the benefits of that thus far. I also wanted to mention, you have a flyer out there. Again, we have a new class starting. We're taking enrollment right now. It will begin August the 9th. So if you have any constituent, know anyone in your church, your family, anyone that you know of that may have interest in becoming an EMT. It's a grand opportunity for them to get trained. And I have those flyers, please share that. Anyone in the public that wishes to check on that or knows somebody may have interest, refer them to becomeamedic.com and they can get a lot of information there. My sole purpose tonight was to bring before you the contract that Acadia Ambulance has with parish government. We've been under a contract with the parish for 12 years now. And this is our third contract with the parish. So in that, it offers the ability for municipalities to sign an intergovernmental agreement. Ms. Landrum, did you send, you should have all received the packet. It's a lot of pertinent information. I actually put what our first six months response times on there. This is a non-subsidized contract. Does not cost the parish, does not cost the city. The only thing in return is we ask for an exclusive so that we have all the paying customers on all the different events that we go to, whether it's a 911 call, a non-emergency call, a paid standby, so that we group all that money in one bucket and we can better serve the whole community. So I ask that you, as a city, support that by allowing the mayor to enter into a governmental agreement with the parish. In that package, you have the contract. I wanted to come before you because you're in a governmental agreement, it's not with Acadia Ambulance, it would be with Tangahoa Parish. But I did explain to them that I'd like to come to your meeting and all the other municipalities in the event that you had questions, so that I could try to answer those. But we do appreciate, we're, we're in our 42nd year of service to Tangahoa Parish and the city of Hammond. Y'all have been great partners. We appreciate the support that you've given us. We wanna be here long-term and continue the commitment that we've always given. And thank you for supporting our company. But I do wanna answer any questions that you may add.
Anyone from the council having any questions? Anyone from the public? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to approve. Second. Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Resolution number nine.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into an annual support agreement with Tyler Technologies, Inc. for the Munis software system. Estimated annual cost of $175,000. Marcus McMillan.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
I'm coming to ask that council authorize the mayor to enter into this agreement. Currently, right now, we are in, Tyler Technologies is pretty much the sole source for the city now. Munis is an application that's been renamed to ERP. And we use that citywide. I come to you every year asking to renew this contract. And the contract, if it does increase, it's usually between roughly five, maybe 6%, unless we add on some things that help benefit in the, in the city itself. To try to, to get away from having to come to you every year for the same thing over and over. I'm asking that we can do an estimated annual cost of $175,000. And if it ever reaches that, then I come back to you for, to, to get it renewed. Cause every year I come to you and ask for the same thing over and over and it's, it's not increasing by much. It's only going with the cost of living and things like that, that it increases.
Anyone from the public have a question or concern on this item? Any questions or concerns from anyone on the council?
So Marcus, I'm sorry, this is the same provider we always have. It's the same thing every year and we're just doing a cap for.
Yes, ma'am, just to keep from having to come back every, every year to ask for us to get into the same agreement. Cause the agreement hasn't changed, it's the sole source. And we've been using this application for years.
And y'all just renew it every year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, but that wouldn't require us to continue. So this'll just last until something else has to change, like the provider or the amount goes over that amount?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's normally like 40 or 50,000?
No, roughly around 50, between 50 and 60. It's about 55 and some change, somewhere around there. And it's been about the same every year. It's just coming to y'all with the same number. It's, I didn't, I didn't think it was relevant to keep coming to ask for the same number over and over and over. And it's something that's not going anywhere.
So you're, you're, you're getting the money for two or three years in advance?
I'm just, I'm, I'm setting a cap. By setting that cap, that gives us, instead of rewriting the whole contract and getting with the company to go through all of the extent of rewriting the whole contract to make it fit what we're asking, we set a cap, we work with Mr. Andre in his office to figure out the best way possible that will be more feasible and the city take up less man hours to try to read, to rewrite this thing the best way. By setting the cap, if it does go up past a certain amount, I will come back. And we set the cap at 175. So if it does go, look like it's gonna reach the 175 or go over 175, we come back to you guys and ask to enter a new agreement. Unless the agreement changes or we switch companies, then we'll come back and ask. But I'm just trying to keep it from coming to tie up a council meeting to ask every year for the same amount.
The council's other way to check this is in the budget, the annual budget. So if we knew that there was gonna be a pretty substantial increase or a change to that, then Marcus would be bringing that as a change in his department budget as well. So you'll still see this number annually, you'll still be having some input in that value. He's just suggesting that unless, as Councilwoman Gonzalez said, unless the provider changes or that amount changes, that cap changes, we wouldn't be coming with this specific item.
So how much it was last year, Marcus?
Roughly between, like I said, 55 and 60, somewhere around that range.
55 and 60, this year, how much it is?
It's still in, it's still around that range, sir.
So I'm looking at 77,000, what I'm looking at? Or I'm looking at something wrong?
No, sir, we're including a, we're including a new time system, which is not Munis. The time system is time and attendance. So that's going to take place over our, that's two things added to that, that's not just Munis. I'm coming to you just for Munis.
So I'm, I'm pretty lost now, cause you tell me it's roughly running between 55 and 60,000 dollars a year, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, but the paper that I'm looking at, it's saying 77. So this 77 shouldn't be on here, right?
What's, what's listed for the 77?
Uh, some of everything on here that I see, I mean, I can't pinpoint one thing.
Did I see the paper? So on this paper that you're looking at, we have everything itemized down that, that Munis consists of. From citizen self-service to payroll, to project accounting, human resource management, all of those things. All of that's consisted in, consist in, in Munis itself. You get down to the bottom of page two, you're looking at intergov support, which we're doing away with intergov. That's what we were talking about, doing a transition for the building department. So some of those things are going away that are actually listed on this paper. And if you look back at the, this, this transition took place like last week, week before, somewhere around there. This goes back to last month. This, the bill that you're looking at, that's the most recent one that we had. All of this stuff that you have here, that's listed in, what we are bringing to you today is not listed. It's not, it's not, it hasn't been fixed here because this is the old bill. These are things that we're not utilizing anymore. Like I said, intergov support, once we get MGO in place at the building department, intergov support will go away when, yeah, one, two, three. Yeah, four things here that are for intergov, so that's gonna take off that price drastically. And I can show you those items now.
Okay, that's three of them.
Marcus, is this supposed to be up to 175,000 or 75,000?
Up to 175.
Okay. Why, why if it's running about 50 to 60, maybe 70 something when we do a few things, do we need to do it up to 175?
It can be adjusted. It's, it's not a problem. It's just, we, that was a number that was chosen as a cap. Like I said before, everything that's been increasing over the years, it's been going along with cost of living, say roughly 5%, between 5 and 10% that has been changing. But once we, 175 seemed to be a number where we wouldn't have to keep doing this at all. And if it changed, it's gonna be something that's gonna be drastic, that's gonna change. And if we add anything to it, it still keeps us in that cap. Like right now, as we were stating about the time system that's about to change, that's a Tyler product. We can include that with this also. And if we put that time, that time system in this also, we're still under that cap. Which, like Ms. Landrum stated, you'll see it in our budget. It comes through our budget every time.
But I, I have a problem with it. And the problem that I have, of you telling me the bill running between 55 and 60,000 dollars per year, am I right?
I can get you the exact number, sir.
Okay, no, 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 it ain't, we ain't got the pinpoint. But I'm saying, if you give me a number between 55 and 60,000 dollars per year and we talking about 175, that, and that, you don't have to come back up here and man hours, that don't add up to me, that we gonna sit here and approve for something. If you would've said 77,000, I would've been, I don't have a problem with it. But this is the taxpayers' dollars and this is what we don't understand. You know, it'd be in the budget, but in the process, things are never broke down in the budget where it'd be a clear understanding when we dealing with the budget.
Let me share this with you, Mr. Wells. Let me share this with you, Mr. Wells. If anything was going to be additional to that contract, as far as anything additional with Munis or anything like that, I still have to come before the council. Any additional things that will be added have to come before the council. But in order to be able to say, if this contract is going to stay this way, and it's only cost of living or things like that, that it increased, it was just setting a cap just to have a number. Seventy thousand is fine. Even if we said that I'm changing something tomorrow, I still have to come to you for approval, whether it's under that 175 or over that 175. So, nothing will go without your approval. It's just putting a number there that I still have to come to you. I still have to come before the council. It's putting a number there so we won't have to get with this company to rewrite a contract and get out of our old contract, which will increase our prices because we're pretty much grandfathered in.
And how long we grandfathered in for?
We've been with them for roughly, I've been here seven years, and it was here at least five or six years before I even got here.
Okay. And we was with a company before that, before you got here, we was in. And it end up, we got another contract for almost a million dollars, am I right, dealing with the police department, when we change everything around?
That was something totally different.
I know, but I'm just saying, is it dealing with technology? That's what I'm asking.
It's dealing with technology.
It's dealing with technology. And that contract, be exact, I think that was during the beginning of the year, this year, am I right?
Yeah, I think so. Late last year, maybe.
Speaking on behalf of CoLogic, yes, sir.
Yeah. So, see, that's a million dollars right there. So, I mean, close to a million dollars. So, that's just, that was one contract. So, what I'm saying is, and I don't have a problem seeing you every year. I don't, I don't know about nobody else. So, but it's a big jump from fifty-five, sixty thousand dollars a year to 175, and you don't have to come back up here. You know, even small things that, that we don't see and that we do see, it's the taxpayers' dollars. And that's my concern, because if we gonna be concerned about one penny, it's not our money, it's the taxpayers' dollars. So, that's my concern about me voting on a 175 versus fifty to sixty thousand dollar contract. That's a big difference.
Well, I understand your concern versus the 175 and the difference in the gap, but I will ask you this. Can I get your attention?
Oh, you got it.
I will, I will ask you this.
So...
I didn't come to you for CoLogic. I came to you for Tyler products. If I came to you for CoLogic, I could speak on behalf of CoLogic. I came to you for Tyler products. I came to give the direction of CoLogic, but I didn't come to speak on behalf of it as bringing the numbers to you. I'm bringing numbers to you that I've done the math that I can stand by.
Okay. So, who come up with the number 175?
That number was a number that we worked with Mr. Andre and Purchasing to come up with a safety in that number that we can put there, that is not a number that we have to turn around in six years to come back in and do this again, because we're not planning on getting away from this. This is a sole source application.
Well, I mean, I think a hundred thousand slush fund is a good bit. I like seeing you when you come up here. So, I don't have a problem with seeing you when you come up there asking for stuff. So, I just think that's a good buffer. Now, if you were talking about seventy, you know, fifty-five and more than sixty or whatever, I mean, big difference, but I don't, I don't see really doubling it, you know, a big issue. I mean, it's, to me, I think it is an issue. So, I mean, that's just me, but I like it, you know? I think seventy-five is good, or whatever we have on there, or what you've been doing every year.
Yeah, you got to say it.
Like I stated before, it's, nothing can be done without y'all's approval anyway. It's just something for documentation, instead of sitting down with a company to lose a current contract that was grandfathered in. So, if you say seventy, that's fine. If that's how we have to do it, I'm just, I'm taking a route that I foresee that we don't have to do this every time to go back and forward over a contract that's going to get approved, because that's our, that's our core environment. Yes, ma'am.
So, I'm doing numbers.
So, Marcus, when you say contract, I'm sorry. Go on, go.
No, I was just gonna say, you know, if it's like a five percent, and just, you know, inflation or cost of living or whatever, you looking at maybe three to five thousand dollars more every year. So, would it, would it be acceptable for you if, like, we made, we just lower that one, I get their point, you know, lower that 175 amount to, say, ninety or a hundred, so that that will give you a few years with this sole source, we're not going to anybody else. And it's just that this 175 number, it looks big, right? And so, if you make it more...
Whatever y'all decide, ma'am. I'm here to do a job.
Yeah.
So, if you say you want it to be seventy, I'll come here before you and we'll do it at seventy. If you deny it, I'll be here in front of you to ask for it again. I'm just trying to make things a little bit easier, less man-hours, to make things more convenient to do my job. And I just leave it at that.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, Andre LaMack, can we make an amendment to this to lower the amount?
Certainly.
Annual, and should the wording not be for annual cost of up to, instead of an estimated cost?
Yes.
Okay.
What do we normally do? What is, has it normally presented?
Comes up every, just comes...
Yeah, but it's presented like, they would like seventy-five thousand dollars or sixty...
Yeah, the question is the annual renewal. What they're looking for is a, is a cap on what they can spend for these annual contracts every year. That 175 number, that was a number Purchasing came up with as a estimate. We're not locked into that number. Certainly, you can decide what number you're comfortable with.
Right. And as he stated, he still has to come before us to get approval for anything.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Gives them bargaining power, you know, contract power, I presume. I'm looking for the preview. So, you know, like, two years ago, it was a resolution to, for annual support with the exact dollar amount. It was sixty-nine thousand, five hundred. So, you know, I would suggest we just reduce that amount that's in this resolution to ninety. That gives them the ability to see a price increase, but they're still, we're still within, you know, an easier number than 175.
I mean, when you put off a bid, you can still come back and answer the money to make the contract, when they bid on a contract.
It doesn't have to be bid.
If the contract comes back at, if you only have the money at sixty-nine thousand, and the contract comes at seventy-two, and they need more money, they can always come and get to three, four, five thousand dollars.
Correct.
So, that's what, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to get at here.
They're just trying to avoid that. They're just trying to avoid...
If it's forty-five, if it's fifty-five thousand, sixty-nine thousand, I mean, seventy-five thousand is, I mean, seventy-five thousand, seven, six thousand dollars in cushion if you, if it comes above.
So, let me ask this question.
Yeah.
We can wash all of that without even adding a number if you just say, I don't have to come to you as long as that contract doesn't change? It doesn't have to be about the, the money is not, the number that's there is not the big issue. The big issue is just having to come for the same contract every year that does not change. So, it's not, it's not the number. We can drop the number.
So, if it doesn't change every year, I don't understand. If it don't change everything, why are we even talking about the money? If it don't change, it's say the same price?
If I, if I did the change on the number, that's just something to put in place to say, okay, if something is added or this or that, it sets a cap. But if it's staying the same every, every year, and it's only, what, five percent or whatever, that it increases for cost of living, the cap was set for those reasons, just for that, that little, that little growth. But if it does not change, I mean, and you say that I don't have to come back for that agreement every year, that's fine. I mean, it doesn't have to be 175. I mean, it was just a number that was chosen as a cap. So, if, 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 if we look at it as, as long as it's a sole provider, and I guess, I guess the reason that the cap is there also, so it's, it's showing the public that, hey, this won't go past this point, but there is going to be growth. Everything is growing. Equipment, we just spent money on equipment to get ready for an upgrade that we just put in place.
Well, I understand that, but doubling the cost to public, I mean, that's, that's a big, that's a big jump on that. I think that's just a kind of...
We won't spend it though.
I know. But then, why, you don't need to ask for it. You don't need to ask for it. That's what I'm saying. What I mean is, if you're not going to spend it, what's the point of asking? I'm not, I'm not being, I'm not coming out here being rude, but I'm just saying, I understand you don't want to come here. Well, it's five, it's, you know, we, everybody's here. I mean, you know, sometimes we stay here six hours, sometimes we stay here an hour. So, what I mean, and I'm not on salary here. So, what I'm getting at, I just don't understand what's, what's the big, we're not cutting. I mean, I would just say seventy thousand dollars if it's always been sixty-nine, sixty-eight or seventy, just, you know, come back and ask for seventy thousand dollars or whatever to cushion. You think it might be three or four percent increase, you know, for whatever? And then, you know, come, come back. I mean, if not, we just put a million on there, and then you just don't ever have to come back. I mean, so, I'm just saying, like, the 175, don't make it, you could put five hundred thousand, two hundred, three hundred, but 175, it's, it's a, it's a large percentage difference. That's what I'm, that's all I'm getting at. And we, you do it every year, and I mean, I, you know, I just, but...
We could do it every year.
Yeah.
It's fine.
I'll make a motion.
Can we put it at seventy-five thousand?
I would say...
You know, you know what? I enjoy coming hang out with y'all. Leave it as is. That's fine.
We like seeing you.
You want me to remove it from the agenda?
No, no, no. You need, you still need the council approval of the annual support agreement.
I would say put at seventy-five thousand dollars, and then go from that route.
I have to come back for that because it's worded differently. This is worded to get the cap, so I'm gonna have to come back and ask for the whole agreement just by...
No, they can, they can do that now.
Andre, I'm going to make, make an amendment to this resolution, that the amount be seventy-five thousand.
Up to?
Up to seventy-five thousand.
An annual cost.
Second.
Is that the amendment or...
Bush to amend it. Yeah, he's gonna amend the amount to seventy-five thousand.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
You're welcome. I need a motion to approve it as amended.
Make a motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Thank you, Marcus.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marcus. Glad to see you.
Resolution number ten?
A resolution to authorize the position of Assistant City Attorney for Civil Service and Related Matters, Andre Codre.
As President, members of the council, in an effort to more efficiently and effectively handle the civil service matters for the city, I recommend the creation of a new position, an Assistant City Attorney, to handle civil service and civil service-related matters. And this would be on work only as an as-needed basis. What's become clear over time is that the civil service laws and the regulations require particular knowledge and experience because they're very detailed, and actually, they're very unforgiving. And civil service encompasses lots of things. It's hirings, promotions, job classifications, testing, personnel actions, and sometimes discipline. So, so this position would give, I think, valuable guidance to the police chiefs, fire chief, the director of administration, the human resources director on all matters relating to civil service. And those questions come up very often. Most civil, most civil service matters are now handled by the city prosecutor, the existing Assistant City Attorney position. What we find also is civil service matters are sometimes adverse. Sometimes you've got officers or firefighters who are in adverse position to the city, but at the same time, those officers may be a witness in a criminal case in city court, and the city prosecutor handles those. So, creating a new position would separate out those duties and avoid those conflicts. The way the charter is written, you have the authority to create the position. And then, once the position is created, then the city attorney appoints the person for that position. So, I'm, I'm here to tell you that we've already identified the person that we want to appoint to that spot, and it's someone very well experienced in civil service matters. In fact, Henry Olin, who currently serves as the Hammond Civil Service Board lawyer. So, he's the lawyer for the board, and he would just change hats and now represent the city before the Civil Service Board. Henry, so, so Henry's familiar with the City of Hammond board rules, processes, procedures, and personnel. Henry's very experienced. That's one of the top things I was looking for, someone who handles this a lot. He represents lots of fire protection districts on civil service matters, including the Tangi Baho Fire Protection District Number One. He does work for the City of Zachary Police Department and civil service boards for Denham Springs, the City of Broussard, and the City of Ponchatoule, among others. Henry's agreed to accept the position, and this would not require a change to the budget. We're basically reallocating resources to cover those expenses for that. I believe this will create a more efficient, a better process for the city in handling civil service matter, be a valuable resource to the administration, the fire chief, and the police chief. And I recommend this and ask for your approval. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Has there been an uptick in civil, civil service claims or suits or to motivate this, this change right now? Because you've probably been here, probably, what, sixteen to twenty years, I'd imagine, now?
Twenty years.
Twenty years. And so, is this, this is the first time y'all are, are gonna sub out a position this, this size?
Yes. And there is an uptick.
Okay.
There is. And without, without getting into details, it has become a, a more detailed job.
You would say in the last couple of years, or...
Um, yeah, it's hard, it's hard to track. There were, there were times when there were ebbs and flows throughout the twenty years I've done this, where there was, for a time, there were lots of hearings, and then not so many, then lots of hearings and not so many. So, it's really an ebb and flow.
Andre, if Mr. Olin, if this is approved, and he's the, the civil service city attorney, will he be on the board? Or he, who would be the board's attorney if he's already...
It would get another attorney.
Okay.
In fact, in the transition we're working through, that we would not have the transition until the boards identify another lawyer.
Also, I had someone reached out about them desperately needing another board member. And I'm hoping we're working on that?
Yes.
And getting them some help?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And come to us and get that done.
That is active on the front burner.
Okay.
Andre, I put that paper before you. Number two. Explain number two to me, please.
Uh, this is a proposal for services, police consultant services. Number two says, police practicing, practices consulting, consulting services, including accreditation consulting, will be provided at the request of the chief of police on an as-needed project basis for a rate of two hundred dollars an hour.
So, and I asked that question because if he gonna be working, he gonna be working for the fire department also, right?
All civil service employees.
All civil, so which the fire department is civil service, right?
Yes.
Okay, so why just the police chief only?
Oh, no, it's the fire chief as well.
Okay, but I, I didn't see that, and I wanted to make sure.
No, no, this is, I'm not sure where this came from. I'm not sure where this.
Thank you. See? And this, it's, it's nothing against what's going on. Where did this come from? Do anybody know anything about this? So I'm the only one got this in my folder.
That's the last page. Police consulting services.
Yeah. Cause see, I need to know what I'm voting for. That's, that's my concern. So don't nobody else have this sheet?
No, that's for a different matter.
That's the number twelve.
Yeah, number eleven.
That's the next one. That's the next one. That's what Andre is talking about is totally different than one you have. Go with the resolution number eleven.
So we ain't got paying him two hundred dollars an hour on this one here then, right?
No, it would be more than two hundred dollars an hour.
Okay.
And it's only per hour. It's not, so you have a retainer with me, you have a retainer with the city prosecutor. This is only on an as-needed basis.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions on this item? Step to the mic, please. Give your name and address.
I'm on one twenty South Oak Street, and I'm the current, uh, chairman of the Hammond Fire and Civil Service Board. Obviously, Mr. Olin is free to work to whoever he wants to. We do have, from what I understand, a contract with Mr. Olin's office, the Hammond Civil Service Board. He advises the board on various issues, so I guess my only concern is going forward, is there a conflict of any matters that he's currently advised us on if he chooses to work for the city? To me, my opinion, I think it's a conflict of interest, but I'm the attorney, so.
Is there some ongoing cases right now that he's, um, consulting with?
Yes.
Okay.
There's no doubt there will be a transition, and there will be things that have already come before the board that, uh, Henry would be precluded from handling on the city end. And we're gonna have to work through those transitions for pending matters before the board. Those would maybe be handled by, uh, Assistant City Attorney may be handled by me, but it would not be handled by Henry. He would have a conflict. That's correct. And, and we do, again, let me reiterate, we do want to time the transition. We're, we're looking at September. We wanna time the transition so the board is covered with legal counsel. The intention is not to leave the board without legal counsel, get someone on board to represent you, George, the board.
So, so there is no conflict for that, that attorney representing, I guess, the Civil Service Board, I guess, pretty much against the city in a way? And, and then y'all hiring them back, which, you know?
There'll be a transition so that as of the transition date, uh, Henry would not handle things that had previously been before the board cause he would be conflicted out. He would only handle new matters from that point forward. And whoever the city, the Civil Service Board hires as its new lawyer would handle those. And that's something we would just work out internally between city prosecutor and myself for handling those things in the transition. We're not looking for any gaps in, in, uh, representation from the board or the city.
So let's say there's a situation that is not resolved in that time manner, period, rather. How, how would that be overseen?
That conflict continues, so it's either gonna happen, if it's, if it's a matter that was previously presented to the Civil Service Board, Mr. Olin could not handle that. That would have to be handled by myself or the city prosecutor, Brad Stevens. We would continue to handle that matter until it resolved.
George, you're the chairman of that board?
Yes.
All right. Do, do you feel, how do you feel about if you're the chairman of that board? I mean, you, I mean, what's your thoughts on it? If you?
Well, like I said, uh, me and Mr. Olin's spoken about this previously, um, the last conversation we've had that, um, you know, he hasn't given the city an answer, um, so this is kinda blindsided. That's why I'm here when I saw the agenda. But I mean, it is what it is. I mean, he is free to work for whoever he chooses to work for. I know he represents boards all across the state, uh, to my knowledge, and I may be wrong, but I don't think he represents cities in civil service cases. So he will actually represent the city. If an officer's disciplined, he would represent the city and, you know, bring that case before the board. So that's just my, my only concern.
Yeah, so you probably, you have some concerns about, I guess, the relationship, I guess.
Uh, well, I mean, I, I know you've, you've done some private work for the city before while, you know, currently representing the board.
Anyone else have any questions or concerns?
Well, I think it's a, uh, it's a very complicated area of law, and we've seen that with, uh, a lot of things that have happened in civil service. And so, you know, I guess if the board doesn't wanna lose him, I think it's a good sign that the city would want him, you know, quite frankly. Um, and if this is gonna help us do better as a city, then I think it's the right move.
Do y'all have a contract with him? Right now the Civil Service Board has one with, uh?
Yeah, I've not seen it if they do, but I would presume the Civil Service Board does have a contract with Mr. Olin.
I guess it expires, uh, it has an expiration date, I'd imagine.
Yeah, so typically lawyers get, can get fired and hired as, as the client wishes. So that, that would be, we would work at that in the transition. Again, the point is, we're not gonna leave the city or the Civil Service Board without legal representation. That's gonna be the, the, the first thing is, is you've gotta approve the position. Once you approve the position, then I would appoint Mr. Olin with a transition date, effective date to be determined as we work through the transition.
Yeah, and then, I mean, this, I'm not, uh, my, my question and concern was just about the conflicting issues. Uh, not so much of y'all trying to better the, the city and, you know, process since there's an uptick in the last couple of years of, of cases. Um, I just, you know, wanted to make sure everybody felt comfortable with whatever they may have going on and there was, you know, um, no conflict of interest or any kinda, you know, just, you know, you know?
Yeah, so I understood, and that is our concern as well.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Pleasure to the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Astain.
Resolution number eleven.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into agreement with Lexipole to write and implement policy and procedure manual for the police department in the amount of thirty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty-four cent.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Assistant Chief.
Uh, this is an agreement that we would like to get into with the company, Lexipole. We trying to redo our policy and procedure manual. The thirty-three thousand dollars is actually two parts. One being fourteen, six forty-three is the implementation fee. It's a one-time implementation fee. The second is the yearly cost, eighteen, five thirty-five. That year begins August first of twenty-twenty-three until July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. This, um, this policy manual that we currently have is on a computer CD drive within the police department. We trying to get up to date online. It allows any changes of the policy to be pushed out to everyone at one time. It also allows us to track everybody receiving that policy, as well as training of the policy, training, uh, videos. Um, so it, it does a multitude of things, but the most important thing is it keeps up to date with all the current laws as they change. And that's a big thing. You know, the legislation makes changes, anything that they make changes to that affect that policy, they automatically fix all of that for us.
May I ask the, um, is this rewriting the manual?
Completely redoing our manual, yes. We will have input as to how it's written. Um, we will have probably a couple of, two or three of us that will review all of these policies one at a time and go through it. And, um, at the end, I, I don't know how many policies we may have at the end, maybe two hundred or so. Uh, it's, it's not a, it's not a week-long process. It's a, it's probably a very long process, to be quite honest. But some things we can, uh, automatically put into effect immediately.
Can you tell me what, I'm a little confused by the attachment of there being Lexi, Lexipole, who's, who's this contract would be with? And then something about Daigle?
Those were two other quotes that we attached.
Okay, okay.
Um, one of the quotes, uh, came in at forty thousand dollars. Uh, we immediately, um, didn't want that. It was too expensive for one thing. And I think that's what Councilman Wells was referring to earlier, about the two hundred dollars per hour. So that was forty thousand dollars for the, for the policy, as well as any additional at two hundred dollars an hour. That was a, that was way, way out of line for us. The second one was a little bit under what, uh, we currently, uh, are looking at, but it doesn't do the things we want it to do. They simply give us a hundred and sixty policies and it says, there it is. That's not what we need. Lexipole is one of the few companies, at least that I could find, that does what we want to do. Unfortunately, there's not a whole lot of companies out there that do this. It was very difficult to try to get anything to even, I mean, they'll give you some policies that they currently have as a standalone policy manual, but we wanted training in there. We wanted the ability to, to test our employees on the policy, keep up with that. The night shift can do it at two o'clock in the morning. They can just pull over somewhere, read the policy, take a, a little written test on it and everything, keep up the date. Um, and we think that's very important for what we do.
What have they been doing?
Currently, what we do is we have a policy that's on the, uh, drive within the police department. And if something changes, then we gotta push out each change individually, get everybody to sign that they receive it, and stuff like that. And then if we do test on that policy, we gotta make a test up, go to the training center, take the test, and keep up, keep up with it that way.
So is it through the power DMS?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I forgot to ask you, cause I know when I was at the sheriff department, there's a lot of our training and let's do that system. So let me ask you this question here, uh, Angelo, the policies that you guys have now, is it a digital copy? There's a hard, is it a hard copy?
It's a digital, it's on our M-drive within our police department. So just imagine if you made a, a policy out of a Word docket and you put it on a drive, that's how our policy.
You gotta flip through the whole thing to get to where you want.
Now, we have a title and, and so forth, but you got, yes, you gotta go through the whole thing. Just trying to.
Modernize.
Modernize our policy.
Is this covered by the, uh, police department budget?
Yes, it is.
Not asking us for money?
Not asking for additional funds, just asking for approval of the funds. But I wanted y'all to understand that this is a, it's not thirty-three thousand. It's an implementation fee one time, and then the yearly cost. I call it a maintenance cost.
Mr. Angelo, how you doing? Look, so on the, uh, how many y'all gonna be picking the rules and the regulations?
Well, my guess is that we, we will have at least two or three people, um, looking at the rules. We probably look at the rule, review it, make our recommendations, forward it to the Chief of Police. He tweaks it how he wants to tweak it, and it becomes ruled, you know, as we go through all.
So you have a process? Do y'all have a process or just whatever?
We should have a process, and the process should be just like I said. It'd be like this, imagine you, you five, uh, board members, uh, being part of the process. Y'all, I hand you a rule on body cameras. Everybody reviews it, puts their input in it, y'all come up to a conclusion. You present it to me. I look at it, I review it. I say, I like it, I don't like, I'd like to do this, I'd like to do that. I present it to the Chief of Police. We discuss it, try to find a common ground, and then implement it.
My biggest concern is, are we gonna be fair? And are we gonna have somebody that look like me on the rules?
If it's left up to me, then I have some people that look like you. There'll also be some people like me who, I believe that I'm a fair person, and that's my intent. Uh, if I have any involvement in it, that's, that's the way I operate.
All right.
Don't know exactly who is gonna be there. I can't, I don't know, I don't have that answer tonight.
So when you get that answer, could I find out? Uh, it's a secret. I don't want to know. Cause what my concern is, Mr. Angelo, and, and let me say it for the record, God knows I have nothing against you. I don't like the things that I see. So it's not you, and I wanna make sure that I'm not gonna do nothing to hurt the city of Hammond anymore. That's my concern, and that's why I asked that question. And I know people feel uncomfortable when I do that, but I feel uncomfortable a whole lot, and nobody worry about how I feel. So that's why I'm asking that question, is go, if it's not in place, what could we do to help it get in place?
Well, my, um, uh, as you well aware of, I've been here a couple of days on this force. Uh, I have always, uh, had a couple of things on the forefront. One of them is the citizens of Hammond, the Hammond Police Department, and then me. And anything that I'm gonna be involved with, I want the City of Hammond's best interests, the police department's best interest, the citizens' best interest. That's, that's, that's always my goal.
Okay.
I, I, I don't, I don't know of any other way.
All right. Thank you so much.
So after the policies and look, uh, they look over the policy, decide to make a, uh, change, orderly the policy the way it is. The government, what governing body approves the policy to put it in place?
Well, uh, I know at one time, I don't know if it's, uh, maybe Andre could answer that better than I can, but at one time, I think the, uh, approval was through the council or maybe the mayor?
The mayor.
The mayor.
The mayor. So, so it, there's an internal process for the police department? And Angelo explained how this will be changed, maybe with this company, they'll have a process. Then, uh, the chief has to sign off on it. He presents that to the mayor, and the mayor signs off on it. And that's, that's the way all departments within the city operate, not just the police department.
Well, I'm gonna ask you this question then, Andre. Through, and, and through this process, is there a way that I could see a copy of the policy that they have and a copy of the policy that may come into effect to be changed?
I, I don't see a reason why you could not. That's up to the chief or the mayor, but I don't see any reason why you would not.
Think it's a good idea, Kip?
I'm, I'm just, just asking.
I just remember you're talking about a lot of policies. I mean, it's a, it's a thick book.
I'm quite sure, if it's anything like the sheriff department book, uh?
And some of them are very technical, and some of them are very secure. They're not really public information and public record. But certainly I see no reason why you would not be in that loop, but that's not my decision.
Well, I think from what Mr. Angelo said, that he want the public input, and, uh, we know the mayor had a last say-so. So I, so, uh, Kip being a councilman representing the area, in my opinion, you know? And he deal with the sheriff department, I done dealt with the sheriff department, so I don't, I think it's a good idea that he even wanna be a part of it, you know? Making sure that we keep policing everything the right way. So, and then, I don't see why it's a secret. If it's a secret now, you shouldn't even be before us, and I know you don't have nothing to do with it. So I don't see why it's a secret, so, and if we trying to sneak something in, as we say in the community, you know, don't do that. You know, just, if you be straight, everybody can understand, and everybody can see.
One of the main concerns I had, and I actually redid the policy procedure manual when I was Director of Administration with Mason. And we involved the lieutenants, the captains, uh, assistant chief, police chief, but most importantly, the people. Who's under the captain? The lieutenants?
Lieutenants.
No, sergeants. Uh, everyone that was involved in each, um, division, when it came to a policy, came to the room, and we went through it that way. My concern is having someone like this, we're not missing anything. And having you look it over is fine. With, you know, more eyes, the better. Bottom line is, we just wanna make sure that we're up to date with things that are changing, and a company like this, who's experienced and professional, will do a better job and be up, you know, to date daily if something changes.
This is a very long process, I'll just tell you. I mean, the mayor can tell you, when, when he had to call all these people in, one policy may take a week sometimes because we have people working all kind of different hours.
It took the better part of a year.
Yeah. It, it's, it's not something that happens in, in a month. I wish it did, but it's not gonna happen that way, I can just tell you.
Well, we got almost three more years to be up here, so we got time.
I'm like Marcus, I don't really wanna come up here.
Oh, God. Oh, God.
Not gonna like that.
Well, thanks for bringing this information up, Angelo. Uh, I, I appreciate it. Thank you, Andre, for answering my question. Uh, I was just concerned about it, cause my background is law enforcement. My degree is in criminal justice, so, um, I just had a concern and wanted to know a little bit more, if I could see it, uh, you know? That was just my concern.
Hopefully, we can get it done in a, in a reasonable, uh, time. You can get your eyes on it and look at it and make every, not make everybody happy, but at least make everybody understand what we trying to do. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anyone else from the public?
I just have one question. Um, is this being installed by IT? Or is this being, um, just the police department installation with the company?
This is a web base. Um, so everyone within. So everyone within the department, each employee, would have a login and password to get into the system. It's not gonna be housed on our server, it's web based.
And then a follow-up question, just to piggyback off of President Andrews. I think that was a great idea about you wanting to sit in. I can remember during our charter review committee, which I hope you guys revisit, we had recommended to you all a citizen advisory board. And any way that a citizen advisory board can assist with the police department for full transparency for our city and communities would be great. So I hope, I think this was a perfect opportunity to say that, since they're redoing their policies and procedures. And I understand what Mr. Coondray is saying, some things cannot be seen, but if you all would consider that, that would be great as well.
Thank you, Mr. Wells.
And I'm all for policing, I'm all for seeing the city grow. I think out of everyone sitting around this table, I have more of a personal stake with the Hammond City Police Department than anyone sitting in this room. My grandfather served this city for years, my uncle served this city for years. So I can go all the way back to Chief Adams. So I look at this department totally different than anyone probably sitting in this room. So I have some strong roots that go into this department. And I wanna see this department be the best that it can be. But I'm gonna watch this process and see how things go. I think this is a great idea. Things do change, some things need to be addressed, something could be moved around, something could be added, some things could be taken away. But let's not lose the focus, and the focus is to make the department better in their policing policies and things that take place here in our city. So I'm all for it, and I just wanna see the best be done. Can I get a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Thank you, Angelo. Resolution number twelve.
Resolution supporting the submission of a nineteen thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollar application to the Etwood Born Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program to purchase portable radios for the Hammond Police Department, Charles Boshier.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This should sound familiar. We've been using these grants to purchase radios now for a couple of years. According to the chief, we have about thirty-two more to purchase. This grant will probably allow us to purchase around ten to eleven. There's no match requirement. This is strictly federal dollars that we'll put into purchasing those radios, and hopefully, we'll be able to buy what's left with the next grant that comes along.
Anyone from the public have a question or concern on this item? Anyone from the council? Pleasure to the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Resolution number thirteen.
A resolution supporting the submission of an application to the Apache Corporation Tree Grant Program for two hundred and forty trees for an annual Louisiana Arbor Day tree giveaway, January nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, Charles Boshier.
This one probably also sounds familiar. This is one of those annual grant applications that we submit. There's no dollars involved in this one, no match requirement either. If we're successful, we are simply getting a number of trees. These are provided by the Apache Corporation through usually a local nursery. And then what we've done in the past, when we've successfully got this grant, is we've distributed those trees at a free giveaway on Louisiana Arbor Day, which is usually the third Friday of the January of the next year, twenty twenty-four.
So Charles, those trees, when you give them away, that anyone in the community could come and get those trees? Or is?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So if I wanted to come through there and get about ten of those trees, just for the, you know, for the park?
I think in the past, we've set, Keep Hammond Beautiful generally manages this event, and I think there's been a cap on how many trees you could get at one time. This is a larger number than we've previously asked for, and part of this is in response to Hurricane Ida, we've lost a tree canopy. So I'm not sure what that cap will be. It also will depend on whether we get the full two forty or some fraction thereof.
I was just joking about the number, but.
Well, the goal is to give them all away, right? We don't wanna be stuck with trees, so.
Anyone from the public have a question on this item? Anyone from the council?
They tend to be, I believe, five gallon trees, which are a good, there's a minimum size requirement that the Apache Corporation sets, I think it's five gallon. So that's a, it's a small enough tree that it comes in a pot, and, you know, the idea is that you can plant it once you receive it. You don't wanna leave it in the pot too long.
How many they had last year, a hundred and fifty years?
Last year, we did not get the grant.
Not, not, okay.
And if they get the grant, Charles, would these trees be given out at the born?
Yes, at the maintenance year of one ninety.
Yes, correct. Any other questions? Pleasure to the council? Make a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charles. Reports, mayor?
Reminder, July twenty-eighth, Friday, we'll be having a, Judge Britton Sledge and myself, we'll be having a twelve hundred backpack giveaway for children in the community for going back to school at Hammond West Side. Like to thank Principal Jason Oller and School Superintendent Melissa Stille for allowing us to use the facility. And it's an annual event, and it goes over really well and helps the children prepare for school for this year coming.
Council reports?
Just wanted to say, we had a speed bump got installed. They're, you know, people very happy. But in there, we put a contact for them to kind of put, you know, reach out to those contacts in there just to kind of coordinate, you know, whatnot, at least discuss. Back when, you know, Robert Morgan was there, like he had, you know, he would kind of, you know, talk with them and whatnot, because they live on the street or whatever, and I thought that was kind of the policy. So I went ahead and, you know, submitted the contacts to the contact in that area, and they don't, I don't think they reached out to them or whatnot. And, you know, the placement, you know, was maybe not what was expected, but they're happy. And it may be a reason, but if they would have, like, talked, they would have been able to, yeah. They would have known a little more about why, or what, or whatever. So I sent the cell phones and names, and it showed up, which we were very happy. But I was hoping that they could kind of maybe talk.
Generally, the process for placement is not placing it where you're coming back and out of a driveway onto it, and not a certain distance from stop sign. So, but like you said, sure, absolutely.
I'd like that.
Getting together with the numbers and calling the folks and getting them involved is no problem.
Okay, thank you.
Any other council reports? Yes. Mr. Angelo, you might can help me out. We had a shooting in Mooney Park yesterday. I don't know if the police department is aware of it.
I haven't heard anything about it.
Okay.
Was it reported, do you know?
They called and told me about it.
Sometime they call, but they don't call us.
Okay, do what my concern is. Anytime we dealing with the parks, my concern about the innocent people that's in the park, and, Mr. Andre, you might can help me out, I think I talked about this before. I don't care who it is. Is any way that we can come up with a law, if you do any shooting in the park, that you get twenty years in prison? And I mean that, because what's going on, the bullets always hit somebody that it wasn't supposed to hit. Not only did they start on the basketball court, they was running out the park still shooting in the neighborhood. I got a ninety-three-year-old resident stay by the park. Her grandbaby know about shooting. We talking about a three-year-old kid know about when they hear a gunshot. The grandbaby left the grandmother out there. What law that we can come up with when someone is shooting in the park?
Well, I'm happy to look at it, is the short answer. But typically, that would be a felony, that would be governed by state statutes, because that would be a serious crime if you shoot someone. I'm happy to look at it for you, councilman, and tell you what your options are.
I just double-checked, I usually get an alert anytime there's any reported shootings or any major calls. I didn't get any alerts for any shooting yesterday. That's not to say it didn't happen, it's just to say that maybe it was never officially reported to the police department.
Okay, but we got cameras in the park, and I know, you know, is any way that we can look at the cameras?
That I don't know about reviewing the cameras, that's a Marcus.
I know, but he ain't wanna see us no more, so, but he gonna see.
I would hope you'd be able to do that.
Yeah, 'cause if not, you know, I don't see the purpose of the camera. Then we just spent, what, seven thousand or fourteen thousand just to get internet to the park for the police department to view the cameras, that's not hooked up yet?
The cameras, we have some cameras that we view within the police station, but we don't, within the police station, don't have the ability to review it and search stuff that comes out of the IT.
Okay, well, that's.
Or if we do, I'm not aware of it.
So the parks are monitored right now in the police department on the screen, or?
Not certain which parks. I know on South Hollywood, that park is monitored. I'm not certain if we have any other parks online yet. I know they in the process with the fibers and everything. We're getting fibers, and I think the IT was getting fiber installed to have a direct hookup just for the park cameras within the police department, so there'd be nothing interfering with that connection. I'm not exactly sure where they're at on that.
Okay. Andre, could you please look into it and see what rules? And I don't think nobody got shot in the park, but the shootings start. But I mean, for us, at the schools, don't they have something when somebody have a firearm around the school or in the school property?
Yes, sir, and there could very well be a state statute on it, I'm just not familiar with it.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, could you please help me out on this here? That's why I talked about the signs for the cameras in the park, because, you know, we have to respect one another. And I pass by the dog park all the time in Z-Mare Park. Ten benches, five, ten benches, nine garbage cans, and ten, and two swimming pools for a dog park. And I've been asking for bleachers, benches, I've been asking for this stuff for Mooney Park, going on three years. And I talked to Charles, the grant writer, which they pulled to do a bundle. We still have nowhere for the people to sit in the park. The new, the new toys, the rides for the kids under the basketball court. Charles and I, the fence supposed to be in in about eight weeks, the last we talked about it. He dying to open it up, but right now, we got clay on a brand-new playground, ground. We still getting clay on that. And I'm saying this here, this new. I don't want nobody to get hurt in no parks. The playground equipment looks nice. The clay, you know, I don't even know if you're familiar with it, Mr. Mayor, but I tried to tell Charles, that's all they gotta do is go around the basketball court, dig six inches, you won't have that problem. Another issue that I'm having, Lionel Jackson, he got shot. I don't know what's taking place or what's going on. We talk about technology, we, all this stuff we talk about, body cams, the radios, the community, they lost, they don't know what's going on. As a city councilman, I don't expect the chief to come talk to me at all. But I expect the mayor or the second person in charge, at least tell me something. And if y'all don't tell me nothing, what I supposed to tell the neighborhood? Because what I see, from what happened and from what I heard, that could be anybody in District Three, get your door knocked down and get shot. My concern is, all of us should be affected by this. Every police supposed to be trained. Everything that you all talk about, not one time, and you can go back, not one time I denied a police anything from a bulletproof vest, denied them of nothing. But my neighborhood is being denied. It hurts. I had to sit up here and hear everything for everything everybody wanted. What you hear me ask for about Mooney Park? How long I been asking for stuff for Mooney Park? For four years, four years. It's not gonna go away. It's not gonna go away. Something have to be done. Kip, I heard you speaking, and I'm glad you said that you want a good Hammond Police Department. Hell, yeah, I want the best Hammond Police Department that protect, protect, and serve everyone, not just one or two people, everyone. Three weeks ago, a police stopped me. Ran so fast up behind me, I stopped in front of the fire department, 'cause I knew everything was being recorded. Every time I get stopped by a police in the city of Hammond, at fifty-eight years old, I'm scared to death that this gonna be my last time riding on the road. I'm scared, I'm scared of Hammond Police Department. I shouldn't have to be afraid. Yes, and you know the funny part about it? We still, and we talked about it. We still don't have no tracking device on none of the vehicles. I can sit there and say the police stopped me, guess what? Don't nobody know he stopped me? And you know what he told me? I know who you are, Devon Wells. That's what he told me. To me, that's a threat. I'm scared to death. Yeah, right there, the fire department right here. That's why I stopped there, 'cause I knew it was being recorded, 'cause I don't know if he got his body cam on, I don't know if the cam on in his vehicle, but I knew whatever took place, that it gonna end up when it say, when the papers say, when the Daily Star say, Channel Seventeen say, Councilman Wells was at fault, the police had to kill him. That's what I'm afraid of. We have to do a better job. I know the rest of them not scared, but I'm scared as hell every time I get in my car. Now that I see, you ain't gotta be in your car, hell, they'll come in your house. We have an issue. Yeah, they ready to start a riot, anything foolish, they ready to do it. But damn, y'all giving them all ammunition to do it, 'cause not one time who came out publicly and spoke that right now, we still under investigation. Right now, we want everybody to calm down. Right now, everything gonna be released. Just give us a moment to sort things out. See, these issues we deal with every day. And being a black male, I thank God I live to be this old, because the odds are always against us. We have to train our kids, just in case you all don't know, we have to train our kids at five years old, yes, sir, no, sir, to a police officer. At fifty-eight years old, I still have to say yes, sir, and no, sir, to a police officer, and most of them younger than me. But that's the respect that they told us when we was young. And I tell everybody, if you get a ticket that's just like Christmas present, you live to talk about it. So let the law enforcement do their job, you just do what's right. Y'all hear me speaking of this all the time. We getting tired of all these mistakes taking place. And then it end up being the community, the community. And then it end up being the community, the community, everything on the community. I know the community got some stuff with them, but all the community not bad. I ask for law enforcement in the park. I don't see this no more. Everything I ask for is to protect and serve. Thank you.
Any other reports?
And one thing I'd like to say, I know it's unfor, I mean, forthcoming with the investigation and thing, but I do agree with, with the Councilman Wells. Uh, some type of statement should be made because you get, he's right. We getting hit with a lot of phone calls, a lot of questions, and I can't answer or say anything because I don't wanna say the wrong thing. But something, you know, we're, we're pending, I know it's pending an investigation, but I know that, but it should be publicly stated where people could get an understanding of what's going on. Also, on Saturday in, uh, MLK Park, starting at ten o'clock, seeing past my block, uh, we'll be doing a, um, back-to-school giveaway as well. With that being said, I think that's it from my report. Uh, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So much.
Meeting adjourned.